This is William, hopefully your favorite videographer from Two Hats Publishing. I welcome you to another Two Hats special of community events. Let's look in and see what's really happening.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. It's 10 o'clock and we're here. And thank you very much for being here. This is the town hall meeting for District One Dallas County Commissioners. And I'm Teresa Daniel, the representative from District One. I always start off these events by saying, first of all, thank you for stepping up, stepping out just that half a step more than... I know we're all voters, that's a given. But to you take that one step forward and says, no, I'm a part of this community and I want to do a little bit more than that. We don't do anything by ourselves. And I think everybody in this room, because everybody here has been out there doing things, knows that very, very well. So I'd like to recognize staff people because I don't do anything by myself either. Eric Moore is over here. Victor... Walter? I don't know why I still... I look at you and I think Victor. That's not right. It's Walter. Walter Taylor is over here. Claudia Badigus, and I don't have any problems with that name at all. And Susan Martinez is right here. We've got somebody else coming on Monday, starting Monday. I'm looking forward to adding her to our team. But that being said, professionally, as a county commissioner, we do nothing by ourselves either. And for that reason, I do ask that other elected officials and other people who we partner with quite a bit also come. As you've looked at the agenda, people who are working in the departments, because Dallas County is a fairly extensive organization, and so that professionally also within the organization, we do nothing by ourselves either. So I'll give a very brief overview, and then the various departments. It'll be Elections, Health and Human Services, and then Historic Preservation and Public Works will talk a little bit about what they do, how they contribute. But let's start off first with those partners in the bigger world out there. We've got Mayor Office of Garland is here. If you'd like to come up for just a moment and say a few words, because Garland and Dallas County have a lot... we have a lot of areas where we overlap. And I'm very, very proud to be a partner with not only the mayor, but council.
Yeah, we have a pretty large section that you represent. Doug Athas, Mayor of Garland, very proud to be here today. To the Garlandites that are in the crowd, extra thumbs up to you guys. One of my favorite city council members over here, Adam Magoo. How you doing today? Good to see you. Adam and I work on a lot of things. I just wanted to say a couple of words, just to follow up the theme that you're talking about. Judge Zeikins and I were both named directors of the Executive Committee of the North Dallas... or Central Texas Council of Governments yesterday. And that region, where we live in North Texas, we call the metroplex. We are larger, seven million people than 34 states. And we work very, very closely together. We always do things... Most of you know about the tornado a little over a year ago in Garland. We felt like that process and that recovery process went very quickly. But it's only because we work together as a council government with county. And I can tell you that right after the tornado, Commissioner Daniel was one of the very first people there to see the impact of it and to offer assistance. So it's that relationship of working together that I always try to promote. I don't think that we do anything well by ourselves. I think we do a lot of things extremely well together. And so I just wanted to come today and offer my assistance in any way that I could, but mostly to hear these programs that you got. Commissioner Daniel and I, we were at her Road and Bridge facility in Garland on the Rowlett Road down there somewhere.
There?
Yeah, there. We just barely got into this. There's so many cool things going out there with the AgriLife from Texas A&amp;M Extension, the Dog Park and other things that we're talking about, construction of the facility that the community can take advantage of. It's all good stuff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Having already recognized, we also do have Adam Magoo, who is a city council member for the city of Dallas. And much of his district overlaps within the county commissioner District One. So Adam, would you like to come up and just talk a minute about what's going on with Dallas? And we too have a contract on Public Works with the city. We're working on trails and a variety of other things, but you may have other things that you want to highlight about. What's going on in Dallas?
Great, thank you for...
A lot.
There's a lot going on in Dallas. And I want to echo, thank y'all for getting up on Saturday morning and coming here. Whether it's work or learning or being engaged, it's just a great thing to see people here. And the theme of working together, it's just, you know, we're in a time right now where we're divided all over the place. But I can honestly say with our elected officials that we work in this region, we work together. And there are issues that divide, but when it comes down to it, it's all about what can we get done and how do we move forward? And I see Dr. Daniel's at everything. And that's just, it's a huge part of connecting with the people that want to know, they can talk to you, they can feel you, touch you, and know that what you say matters. And so I'm always appreciative of you being there, being involved, engaging in everything we're doing. City of Dallas, we're going through an interesting time. We just had runoff elections and there's some political changes at the horseshoe. And so inauguration is actually on Monday. We are, as we talk about regional focus too, we're also nominating dark board members. So the dark board is changing, at least the appointees from the city of Dallas. And those are a lot of political discussions going on right now. It is... we're looking forward to high-speed rail and some other really unique initiatives that are going to start opening up opportunities for the city, connecting in different ways through transportation. We are, Dr. Daniel and I are working very hard on a project at Skilman and 635, which is, and Mayor Athas has been really one of the leaders on this project from the get-go. And so dealing with both the LBJ East 635, 75, all the way down to 30, as well as the bridge project there right there at 635. And so this past legislative session, we did not get our CDA bill passed, but they're working real hard to try to figure out a way to make this project happen in a timely manner anyway. So those are some big kind of transitional things. The area that I serve is, basically goes from Northwest Highway is the southern boundary all the way up to Richardson and Garland boundaries. And so it's a big portion that we overlap here. And in that, I mentioned Skilman and 635, that project that can really open up some opportunities there. But then you go down, our Lecon Town Center down Skilman is really starting to develop. You've got Sprouts Open and a lot happening there. And then all the way down to the southern part is Skilman and Abrams, where there's an Alamo Graff House coming in. We're really bringing some life back to an old shopping center that was shut down. So it becomes a really unique kind of backbone right there. Last thing I'll mention is, it's biggest discussion going on at City Hall right now is our bond package. We're going to have what's right now determined to be an $800 million bond, will be in November. And the big discussions now are what's going to be included in that bond. We know it's going to be primarily streets and infrastructure because that's what everybody has told us. That being said, of 800 million, right now, the number's only 415 million on streets. And so there's some room to try to figure out what else we need to do there. You got over $5 billion, really closer to 10, of needs inventory. So even at that amount, you're just scratching the surface. But we've got to get at least the point where we're not degrading the streets every year. So I appreciate anybody that wants to be involved in that discussion. We've had Citizens Bond Task Force meeting, but over the next, we get another briefing on Wednesday, and then it moves forward. We're talking about things like libraries and rec centers and things like that to include the really impacted quality of life. So I'll shut up, I'll stay as long as I can. We've got Juneteenth celebrations today. We've got World Refugee Day today. There's a lot going on. And so I think we'll all probably be circling around in a bunch of days.
That's why we're all dressed rather appropriately.
That's right. But thank you for just letting me have some time, and thank you for always working with me.
And we'll see you at the county park later.
Absolutely.
Thank you very, very much. These are absolutely incredible examples of what it does take to get things done and to work together at how we get things done. The number one question that I get is, what does county government do? What do you do? And people are just going, you know, because there's usually a little bit of a confusion over what is city government, what is county government, what does the state do, and how do the feds fit in? So I spend about half of my time talking about what is county government. So I'm just going to take just a couple of minutes to go over that, and then we will have each of the departments already mentioned come up and give a little bit more emphasis on what they do and how it all fits together. My job is a budget job, basically. My primary job is to create an annual budget for the county. We are now heading into budget season with the new fiscal year starting October 1. So along with what Adam is talking about and trying to take limited dollars and see what we can do to maximize those resources for the betterment of Dallas County is top of my mind. Specifically, what that breaks down into is the two major parts are public health and public safety. Public safety is the courts. There are 42 district courts, 27 county courts, and they're all directed by elected officials. The jail is another one of our major items. In fact, it is the largest item on our budget. Yesterday, since I didn't receive any numbers, today, we had 5,301 inmates in that jail at a cost of about $70 a day. That's 11 and a half million dollars a month in expenses in just running the jail. There's a sheriff's department that goes along with that, making about 2,000 employees, and they run the jail, plus security activities for the unincorporated parts of Dallas County. Let's go back just a moment and talk about that, because in every of the 254 counties in the state of Texas, we're all organized the same way. We've got four commissioners, and that's divided, the county is divided equally by population into each of the four districts. My district, District One, is the most compact geographically, and that's because it has the highest number of apartments out of the four districts. It also has the lowest number of miles of unincorporated road. I've got a half a mile of unincorporated road, which is in Restland Cemetery. So that's just the way it is. It does not require a lot of maintenance. Therefore, I don't have anymore a road crew. And in fact, there hasn't been a road crew for District One or Two, which have been the northern districts primarily, for probably 15, 16, 17 years. I still do have a Road and Bridge office because each one of the commissioners, if you've never been in this historic building, as you can tell, it's got a lot of features about it that are unique. But of the four of us, my office is here, Elba Garcia's District Four is right next to me here, Judge Clay Jenkins is right up here, Commissioner Price is over here, and my can trout is right over here. We all work together at this, even though we do have individual districts. And each one of our districts represents about 460,000 people, which is about the size of a congressional seat. Just interesting. And a challenge sometimes. To continue though, public health, public safety. Public health, then, the main engine is Parkland. And Parkland, I'm very proud to say, is the envy of the United States, because we are one of the few counties that has a new hospital, state-of-the-art, incorporating a large number of very innovative, creative, just frontline ways of delivering healthcare to the residents of Dallas County. And we do have a couple of people here from Parkland, and I know that we've got Angela Morris is here, and who else? Ruby Taylor is the Vice President of Nursing and Population Health, right here. And I don't know if you want to say just a moment, say a couple of things for just a moment. I'm just very proud, first of all, of what they're able to do. There are a lot of challenges in healthcare right now. You are very much aware, because I know that you read your newspapers, that healthcare's in transition nationally, in the state, and locally. And so the challenges of Parkland are immense. But our relationship is that Dallas County appoints the board for Parkland, approves their budget, and then by statute, there are a number of decisions that we have to oversee. But they do have their, obviously their own board, their own tax. So their administration is done by themselves. So please, if you'd like to talk just a moment about what's going on in Parkland.
Hi, I've been at Parkland for 14 years and now in ambulatory nursing. So I have OPC and all the outpatient clinics, as well as the outline clinics, and also the jail. So it's really exciting to come and talk to you, see your beautiful place, faces this early in the morning. One of the initiatives we have at Parkland is the New Comprehensive Breast Center. It will be part of the ASC, which is our Ambulatory Surgery Center. They will build two floors out so that we can see the patients that we have. We see about 30,000 women for breast cancer services. So we're really excited that we can expand our services, also have more patient education and state-of-the-art information for patients and their families. The second thing we are looking at is the shortage of nursing coming up. By the end of 2020, we will have a nurse retirement every, turning 65 over a large period of time. In that phase, we're looking at the fact that we're going to lose a lot of nurses, and we call them, of course, our baby boars. So we have an innovative placement center. We're setting up the nursing, and we will be trying to recruit more nurses as well as ahead of a step ahead, where we can recruit and retain the staff that we have. So we have innovative programs, we have teaching, and we also have a lot of leadership education going on around nursing, so that we can retain the staff that we have, who have some really great nurses, as well as get more quality nurses in, and they do want to stay at Parkland. It's a fantastic, wonderful place to work. We also have a new program that actually starts next week, and it's called the Red Jacket Program. So what we do is send out a survey to patients at random to let them know how they feel about Parkland. So the patients receive those, we really appreciate their feedback, so we can make changes and improve on what we're doing as far as patient outcomes. One of the issues that came up was related to being lost. We are excited about our new hospital, however, it's a lot of space and you tend to get lost. So what we're looking at is taking the person from behind the desk to the front of the desk, and they will all be wearing purple jackets. So in the lobby, when patients walk in, they'll be able to meet and greet with someone and find out what their destination is. These purple jacket employees will have cell phones, they'll have iPads, they'll walk the patient where they need to go, or at least get them directed. So that is the main building. Also, our Women's and Specialty Healthcare, we have a building for women, and they will be in that lobby. Also, in RJA, our new Ron J. Anderson Building, where we have our new outpatient clinics there, we'll also have someone in that lobby too. So we're looking forward to it, so we're excited. It starts next week.
Very good, very good. You can tell there's a lot going on.
Yeah, a lot going on. Thank you.
Something else that Parkland does, they partner with Dallas County. And we have a unique situation in the United States, and then we have a 300-bed clinic in our jail, which, and it's administered by Parkland, but then also within the jail, so the security is provided obviously by our sheriff's department. But it's 150 beds for physical issues and then 150 for mental issues. But what that saves is having to transport prisoners to Parkland whenever they have a medical attention needed. So it saves not only that security issue, but it also means that we don't have to have two or three DSOs accompanying them to go to Parkland, it can be done right there. They don't perform surgeries, we don't birth babies, but for many of just the routine kinds of things, then, you know, obviously, Parkland is still our major partner to provide some of those other services. But it's easy for me to talk about Dallas County throughout the state, throughout the county, throughout the country, for these very reasons. Other parts of public health, we're going to hear quite a bit more from our Director of Health and Human Services, but did want to just highlight that mental health is a huge piece of what I do every day. As co-chair of the Public Health Leadership Team, which is the entity that oversees mental health services throughout Dallas County, we monitor, troubleshoot, see if we can manage the funding that's going on throughout Dallas County for mental health services. One of the very acute areas that we focus in on, because we do have a jail, that today, probably 52, 53% of our jail population has either a mental health or a substance abuse issue. The question becomes, is that the most appropriate place for them to be? And so we work quite a bit in doing, working with both the Meadows Foundation and the Carruth Foundation, looking at smart justice, which is an evaluation of what we're doing there. Is it the best way that we can be doing it? And are there better ways for us to, first of all, accept people into the jail, and second of all, have them exit back to the community from the jail? Those are the two major parts, but we also run all elections. Neil here from the Elections Department today. We collect all the taxes. I won't say too much more about that, because obviously, this is the time of year when all of us are trying to figure out, how can we maximize the tax revenue that we do have for the benefit of our residents? Transportation and 635 are two items that will be discussed a little bit more with and other Public Works, when Public Works comes up to talk. Lastly, Dallas County, most people go, well, I didn't know that we have two museums. We have a relationship with the sixth-floor museum, which is right above us. My office looks out over the Triple Underpass, so I am every day reminded of the reason for the sixth-floor museum. And we also have an Old Red Museum. And I also get the privilege of seeing that every day from my window. But they're two important things. Lastly, there has been a mention that each of us has two offices. Of the commissioners, we have an office here, but we also have an office in our district. My office is right here on the edge, and it's in Garland on Rowlett Road. Have already said that there is no longer the need for a road crew there, but that's the way it was constructed. So I think many of you have been there, and you'll see that there are six bay doors on one side of the building, huge bay doors, because we changed the oil and the tires and checked out all of the sheriff's fleet and the Public Works fleet for a number of years. They have, we have now constructed a new, more centrally-located place for all of that to be done, which means that I've got a 7,000-square-foot building, 12 and a half acres, that we will not sell, because it's got a, it's a radio antenna on it that is used by the sheriff's department, the Dallas Police Department, and the Garland Police Department. We've got a long-term lease, so we've got the property. So then you go, now what do we do? And I'm working on what I'm calling the new urban Road and Bridge office. Road and Bridge offices were created originally to provide those services to unincorporated parts of the county. As already been noted, Dallas County's a fairly urban place, and I work with my cities to accomplish those kinds of ends. We've already talked a little bit of contracts with Garland, Richardson, Mesquite, and Dallas on improvements in roads and bridges in those specific areas. So those statutory responsibilities are being taken care of in another way. So my vision is to use that space to bring county services closer to the residents in this part of the county. So I'm so glad that Richard Harris is here, because he's with the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife. And we will be partnering in a much closer relationship than other parts of the county, because he will be using my space for a lot of his 4-H programming, having kids come out and learn about gardening, low-water gardening, learning about nutrition and wellness, and being smart about a lot of things, dealing with agriculture and with animal husbandry. We'll also be partnering with the DA's Community Prosecution Office, so that we can bring those services closer to people within this part of the county. With the Dallas County Juvenile Probation, if there's a difficulty in finding places for kids, for the kids to meet their probation officers, and so we'll offer that opportunity. But the whole point of it is, and the Garland Police Department will have a small space or a space there for their community policing to stop off, rather than having to continually drive around and drive around. But they have a place to stop off, do their paperwork. The point being, to make it a community access place. And so today, we've already got a new roof on it, we've taken care of asbestos, since it hadn't been, we've done since like 1986, doing some renovations in that spot, to make it a welcoming place for Dallas County residents, to be closer to Dallas County services and those kinds of things. Looking forward to it. There's a lot going on, a lot of good things going on. We haven't even talked about the partnership with the city of Dallas, that Dallas County and the city of Dallas. It's a, and I think it's the only one, and it's the first time that this kind of a formal partnership has been set up in order to address housing homelessness in Dallas, in the larger Dallas area. And once again, it's trying to bring all of our resources together to be used more efficiently and effectively, to address issues that are bigger than any one of us. So I'm really looking forward to seeing what we can do there. Just a reminder, if you haven't signed in, please do. I think the sign-in sheet has been moved over right here with Susan. And the importance of that is because I just like to add a little bit of funness at the end of this, there'll be a raffle, and we've got just some special gifts that we'd like to raffle off to those people who've signed in. Without further ado, I would like to move along to, let's hear from some of the department's leaders in Dallas County, so that you could have just a better idea of what we're doing here in Dallas County. And we'd like to start off with Dallas County Elections Department. And we've got Toni Pippin School here, who has been with Dallas County for a few years. And so she knows her job very, very well. And I'm very proud to say, and am confident to say, that when Toni's there, I know it's being done right. So we're all... Thank you.
Well, I think it's still morning, right? Well, good morning. Just, I realize there's a lot of faces here in the audience that I do know, but I do believe those that are here today really know about elections. You know about registration and you know about voting. So those are really the two things, that elections administration and voter registration are our key components to our department. So we're just going to let you know a little about the department and what we're going to cover today. Elections at a glance. And talk about our website. It has a wealth of information. You can't call our office and get that information. We have a really nice website that will give you any and every information that you need. And there's a lot of links there, too. In the event that you can't find something on our website, we have links that you can go outside our website to get more information. Get involved, that's what we always want our voters and the public to get involved. We're going to talk about election updates and election laws, that some are already in effect, and some to be in effect September of this year, and also one that's going to be in effect in 2020. Method of Voting, and November election is coming up, detailed deadline. If you notice the first slide here, just a little update, this is where we currently are in the Health and Human Service, in the penthouse on the eighth floor. We'll be getting that up maybe the latter part of 2018. We're moving to our own facility. We're moving to our own facility that will house not only the administration and voter registration, but we're bringing in our warehouse operation, which is currently sits on District, Commissioner District Three. So all of our, we're having full operation in one location. About the Elections Department, we currently have 45 full-time employees, and the years of service range from months of people we've just hired, to people like me that have been there over 29 years. And during the, during major election times, we usually hire anywhere from 50 to 60 part-timers that work within the office, and also in voter registration, and also at the warehouse. We usually hire between 3,000 and 5,000 election coworkers doing our most major elections. And we have to train those individuals, too, so there are some difficulties in trying to find a suitable facility to try to train those individuals. Dallas County Health and Human Services Department performs the responsibility for voter registration, election administration, and at the voter registration, we're at 1.2 million registered voters, we have been high at 1.3, but Dallas County is one of those counties that where people move out, then they move in. But this number has been affected because of past December, we had to delete about 60,000 voters. Now, we don't delete voters because they don't vote, and that's what a lot of people have a misconception, that if you don't vote, you're taken off the road. The only time we take any individual voter off the road is they no longer live in Dallas County. And if we have any kind of return mail to show us that that person is not living there, we give a person up to four years to give us your current address before we delete you. And we do send out a lot of information to that voter, to request them to give us their current address. What we do, we maintain the registration records of 1.2 million. We administer elections, the presidential gubernatorial constitutional amendment election, which is coming up in November, and that's an election that we have very little turnout in constitutional amendments elections, or telling you about changes to the state constitution that the legislators in this session has to bring in to the voters to get permission to change those particular items in the constitution. So if you hear people say, well, you know, I have my rights, well, that's the election that changes some of the rights. So it's a very important election as well. We conduct local optional legislative elections, and about 43, 44 entities in Dallas County we contract to hold their elections. We have about, the most polling locations, we have about 485. And not only we have elections for the voters, we handle block elections to the different schools for the kids. So we want to educate them young about the process, getting them to know about our election equipment. Hopefully very soon, we'll change that antiquated equipment and come up with some newer technology. I know she'll be giving me my 10 and five, I'm trying to do like Zach, I'm trying to do this in three minutes. Here's our website, dallascountyvoters.org. Like I say, it has a wealth of information, press releases are there, and invite anyone that wants to work at the polls, all of that information is there. We have a quite good staff that works with media, social media, Twitter, and Facebook. We're proud of our early voting interactive map tool that allows you, no matter what address you are, you can put that address in and find out what is the nearest early voting location. Doing early voting, where can I go? The address from your work, or you may be shopping, you see it, and you want to know what location. We have indications here, indications here, that you can find a range from 1 to 15 mile. 15 mile radius, what is the nearest location. This interactive map also wants you to determine what are my options. You can click on that option and see if there's a wait time. We show you little stars where those locations are. Now, if that star turns red, that means it's almost a two-hour wait there. So we try to tell you, don't go where the reds are, go where the greens are, so you look halfway. Getting involved, these are some work opportunities, early voting clerks, election day by legal students, election day technicians, and we also encourage people to be involved with becoming a deputy register, and so you can get the citizens involved by getting them registered to vote, because you can't vote unless you're what? Registered. So bills that impact the election process, and this is one effective by January 1, 2018, that's given, kind of adopted some of the voter ID procedures that we've used in the past, but there are some more criminal penalties with that for those individuals that don't tell us the truth about, I don't have one of their approved IDs. It's about seven categories that the state of Texas says you must have these IDs. Now, the federal law says, we're going to give you some options. And so these options to say, I can't really get these, one of the seven that's appropriate, but I have some options. I have voter registration, I have card, I have an old driver's license from another state, it's about 10 years old, can I use it? Yes, you can. But they have to sign what we call an affidavit. They sign that affidavit and swear to that fact. So if it's not true, you say you don't have a driver's license, because we turn those affidavits into the state, and if you say you don't have a driver's license, and you just want to bring a voter registration card, and use the voter registration card and sign that affidavit, then there is a criminal penalty for that. HB 225 becomes effective 9/1/2020, relates to the elimination of strength party voting in Texas. House Bill 658, sent to the governors on the governor's desk, related to voted by voters with certain disabilities, and voters who reside at a residential care facility. If that one is signed, we're going to have to come back to the Commissioner's Court and ask for some more money in our budget, because we have to do a study, how many residential care facilities do we have in Dallas County? So this law is saying, if I people at that residential care wants to vote, we have to send people out to that care facility and vote those individuals. Now, with that, what's problematic about that? Say if one wants a mail ballot, and that, we have to hold that mail ballot to the deadline to see if anybody else at that facility wants to vote. So we have to hold that voter's request for a mail ballot, that can pass for 60 days, but we're going to have to wait till 11 days before the election, before we can send it. And that's what I think is going to be very problematic, because what if nobody else sends from that facility, but we still have to wait?
There are 85 facilities, that's going to be, interesting.
Yeah, right. And they don't give us a timeframe, like we're going to do it in this week, it's just we're going to have to go out in five, no matter what. And what the current law says right now is that it has to be a Democrat and a Republican. So we're going to have to have more people appointed just to satisfy going to residential care facility. House Bill 929 refers to the time of returning mail ballots by certain federal postcard applicants sent to the governors on the desk. It means that persons overseas, right now they have five days to get that ballot back to us. Now they're talking about eight. So when they're talking about eight days, that means that we have to wait eight days after the election, before anybody can canvass their election. So we talked about how the city is going to inaugurate their current seats. Well, right now, if we wait to five, and we're going to have to wait to eight days. House Bill 1151, related to deadlines for returning ballots voted by mail, sent to the governor, kind of like this one. One minute, oh wow. Anyway, this mail ballot, if a voter, and we have this, we have this issue, that we receive more ballots after Election Day than on Election Day. So this law is saying, take consideration, we're going to give you an extra day. If your ballot's postmarked on Election Day, we can accept it the next business day. Okay, I think everybody knows about the voter registration card and what it means. You can find information on voter ID on our website, and you can have a lot of, in your packet, there's election day information, website, vote by mail, election night results, and training and education on our website. November 7th is the election that's coming up. Last day to register vote is October the 10th. Early voting begins October the 23rd through the 3rd. Information about your mail ballot, Election Day, and don't forget to take your approved voter ID. And again, we have that all on our website, okay?
Thank you very much. You can tell that's a lot of people, very much appreciated. So we have the experience of Tony to help us do those things. Let us now welcome Dallas County Health and Human Services, Zach Thompson, another person who has been with the county for...
21 years.
How many years?
21.
21 years, an experienced voice, and someone who has a willingness to get out there and do what needs to be done. I think that he was particularly noteworthy that our rock star, he's the one that's in the newspaper the most often of any of us, but when there was the tent city, Health and Human Services was the department that went down there and analyzed what we can do to help you. So take it away, Mr. Thompson.
Good morning, good morning. Thanks, Dr. Dan. I'll go real quick through our services, there are a lot, but I'll collapse it into a few areas. And again, I want to commend the City of Garland, City of Dallas, partners for what they do, but as Dr. Dan has pointed out, we're all in partnership. Dallas County Health and Human Services has a variety of programs. Basically, you hear a lot about Dallas County residents who have fallen on hard times. We provide short-term assistance to those residents, and we categorize short-term assistance, three months to nine months assistance. Weatherization program, I can't stress enough about weatherization, there's a lot of older homes in Dallas County, a lot of senior citizens, and these are great homes, but they're not energy efficient, and we really have to get information out to those residents to make sure that they know about weatherization program, and see if they're eligible under the state-funded program. There are other programs out there, but there is a 200% poverty cap that we have with our weatherization program. So definitely encourage residents to contact us. We're able to deal with weather stripping, and also AC units, heating units, that's where a lot of energy is lost, and that's where your bills go off. If you don't have your house weatherized...
Climate cap?
200%. But the best way to do it is to contact the office to let the person do the income verification on the residents. But, you know, my concern, and I've expressed it with the state, 200%, we leave a lot of people out of the equation. So you're talking about a family of two, around $30,000. So we're talking about the middle class is really locked out of this, and so I've made my point real clear to the state, they made some issues about our, even on our comprehensive energy assistance program, you got very poor who qualify, but they don't have a home. That's what's amazing. Those who qualify, that have homes, who could qualify, have homes, but they're above the 200%. So that's a state legislative issue. I want to be around to see that change. That's what we're able to assist low-income residents with their electric bills, again, because the house is not weatherized. Older Adult Services Program, we have it in various sites throughout Dallas County. The biggest thing about our Older Adult Services Program is that, and I know in your neighborhood you see seniors who no one visits them, not even their families. It's the senior centers that really make a difference, where they're able to go play games, eat meals, but it's the congregate setting that really helps out. So all you have to be is 60 and older, and some of us are maybe qualifying in a few years for that. Home Loan Counseling Center, very proud of Home Loan Counseling Center. I'll go to the next slide, because this young man right here was able to pay his home off in 15 years. I know a lot of us are stuck on 30-year mortgages, that's too long. But anyway, 15 years, that's ideal. He worked two jobs to, once he got in the program, to make the payments to insurance. So we're very proud. I was just at an event yesterday, part of our Home Loan Counseling Center program, where another young man was able to pay off his home as well. Environmental health. So let's be real clear, as Dr. Dan has pointed out, she's already given what Dallas County is responsible for. So the other, however the number is, I've heard 25 in this house, how many, Rick, in the Dallas County total number?
About 30.
About 30, okay. It's called home rule. They make decisions for their specific city. So I get emails throughout the night about every city issue that comes up, but guess what? I got to refer them back to the city, because it's not a Dallas County issue. So swimming pool issues, I got an email late last night about issues at a particular store where homeless people are living outside, that's a code enforcement issue, not a Dallas County issue. But I get the emails, because again, they think that I'm the man, but really, it's the city that's responsible. Communal disease, anytime that there is a outbreak, our staff is basically doing it, Dr. Perkins, our top guy, you heard a lot during Ebola, about disease detectives, like that was the newest thing on earth, that's what you do every day with STD, HIV follow-up, and so they do a great job. Foreign travel, we provide foreign travel vaccines. The amazing thing about this is, one of the things that's on its list, we have to take off is yellow fever, there's a shortage of yellow fever vaccine, and so that's basically not our call, that's the call of the government and the manufacturers that are taking that off, maybe another year before we even get the yellow fever vaccine. HIV, STD, I find it amazing, we get questions all the time. So Harris County has the, is number one in AIDS cases. Dallas County has the highest number in new infection, but we get questions on what is Dallas County doing? And I've been doing this 21 years, I've talked to all our state directors, I've visited most cities. In every urban city in the United States, they have a sexually transmitted disease issue in urban cities. But I guess I'm not going to get the question on what Dallas County can do, but the question on the table is, what are the citizens doing? Since 2006, we've been able to pass our condoms, we've been able to do some things that we couldn't do before, but that's not going to drive down the rate. And our 13 to 18-year-olds, we're seeing new infection of HIV. And so there is a policy issue, there are other issues that need to be addressed, but our staff is doing what we are technically responsible for doing. When you find a case, follow up. That's all I can do. One little side joke I used to make is, what are we supposed to do? Be in every bedroom in Dallas County? That's the only way you can address it. Early intervention. The amazing thing about this is that the person that's diagnosed with HIV, there is a loss to care, and I really commend Amelia Court for what they do. Because at the end of the day, we have a lot of people who are lost to care, meaning that they've been positive for HIV, they couldn't get into clinic services based on what they think is fast enough, so they get lost to care. Our staff, Amelia Court's staff, we have to do the follow-up to get those individuals back in the care. That's contributing a lot to these new cases that we're seeing, because people, when we were under the bridge, we found those individuals out there as well. So real quick, immunization, well, child, that's what we do, if it's time to go back to school, you hear me say, bring your kids in early, they're still bringing them on the first day of school. Tuberculosis, I hear this all the time, tuberculosis cases are down statewide, you see spikes up and down, but there's no epidemic of TB. We'll look at that, I'm going to try to get a staff, and our staff, as well as Parkland and other homeless shelters to look at issues. But there are issues about the homeless in terms of TB, that's why they're called homeless, because they move around. And so as they move from one part of the United States to another, that's where the issue comes up in tuberculosis. Our lab, we do the, and we don't get enough credit for it, but again, don't look for the credit. the credit. During Ebola, we did the testing in our lab. On the mosquito testing that's going on, we turn the mosquito results, testing results around in twenty-four hours. You send them to the state, it takes ten days. So go figure. Public health preparedness, again, we're getting ready for any disasters. We responded, not only just during what happened in Raleigh, our staff was involved in Garland, Lynn Heights, Medical Reserve Corps, Zika. That's all I talk about every day, Zika. I'm not in Cameron County where they actually had a confirmed case. I'm not in Miami-Dade where they actually have confirmed cases. The Aedes species, which is the mosquito, we have limited number of the Aedes species in Dallas County. Now, the only place I saw a high number of Aedes mosquitoes, you'll have to go with Dr. Daniels and I, when it's called, it's a tire plant. They had more Aedes mosquitoes in that one location I've seen throughout.
Old tire plant.
Right, yeah. So that's the concern. That's where I see a lot of Aedes mosquitoes. Oftentimes, you're gonna see the Culex mosquito that's carrying West Nile. That's why I try to be Oprah at every town hall meeting. In your bag, you have mosquito repellent. You, 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 you leave, you go home with it. So at the end of the day, here's what the problem is. West Nile virus is our public enemy number one. We can keep talking about Zika. Will we see Zika? You know, that's hard to gauge. There is, again, the population of Aedes is very small. There is no localized transmission of the Zika virus. Now, we have people who come from other countries or go visit other countries where it's endemic. They get bitten, they come back to Dallas County. The mosquitoes in Dallas County, which are Zika-free, bites an individual who's traveled to the country, that starts the localized transmission. But to date, we've not had a localized case. But it gets a lot of news and so I get a lot of questions about it. The real issue I have with this, and I'll be very frank, since two thousand and two in Dallas County, when we first saw the first West Nile case, in nineteen ninety-nine, we saw it in New York. So where we are in twenty seventeen, and there's still not a vaccine to prevent West Nile virus. Now, you do have a vaccine for horses. So when you ask me, what can Dallas County do, I'm gonna turn around and ask you, what are the scientists doing to come up with a vaccine to prevent it? The only thing we can offer, let's be real clear, mosquito repellent, drain standing water, dress appropriately, that's it. And ground spray or aerial spray. And once we leave ground spraying, my email blows up fifty million-plus emails about aerial spray. Don't even mention a plane, and they will start emailing.
Do you provide dunks?
Yeah, and I didn't, should have brought, yeah, we do provide dunks. I can, if you put your address, I'll mail you a dunk or get it delivered to you. But the cities that you live in should be providing a dunk. So if not, but for those who come here, I'll be Oprah twice, I'll get you dunks. Today, we have thirty-two positive traps. You go to our website, you can see an updated list of the various positive traps that are to date. Will we see increased number of positive traps on West Nile virus? I want to be clear, I'm not talking Zika virus. Yes, this is the time of season that we see the mosquitoes carrying the West Nile virus. While we're endemic, what happened in twenty twelve, I find it amazing. We lived through all that, nobody can explain anything. But come the Monday morning quarterbacks, they'll tell me and tell everybody what you should have done. I have, they never said anything to me before that, so I'll wait for their comments after everything has happened. I'm done, I got June-temm- other events I gotta go to.
Mr. Thompson, one question. What is arbo virus?
Arbo virus? Yeah, that's what, that's what, that's what the Zika or the West Nile, that's what we call them, arbo virus. It's a virus. West Nile virus, Zika virus, arbo, mosquito.
Thank you very much. Thank you very, very much. As you can tell, once again, the Health and Human Services covers a lot of territory there. Let us now move to Rick Lussburg and Dallas County's role in historic preservation. Another long-term contributor to the goodness of Dallas County.
Something like that.
I would appreciate his insights and experience.
When we started off about an hour ago, Commissioner Daniel began to try to answer one of life's great questions, what is a county? And I'm gonna try to go a little bit further and try to explain what it is that we do in relation to historic preservation. Typically, when you think of historic preservation at the local level, you think, oh, the major players are gonna be the local historical society that maybe I belong to or that I know somebody in church who belongs to. Or you think of the city who does the historic designation zoning overlay or creates a historic district, or maybe they have their own city market program. The reality is that the county, over time, has developed a role that's just as strong, if not more influential than those organizations themselves. And it goes across a variety of different areas. And we'll begin to talk about that. To the right, to the right. Ah, very good, thank you. We sort of have, it's something we stumbled into this role through a variety of different ways. One is that we are an owner of major historic buildings. This building, for instance, we all think of that typically as it being insignificant because it was, of course, the involvement of the Kennedy assassination. The reality, though, is that one time, this was the largest brick structure in Dallas. We also owned Old Red Courthouse, and we talked about that that building is now over a hundred and thirty years old, and that makes it unique. And of course, the style is incredibly distinctive as well. The reality is, is that when that was built in eighteen ninety, most people probably didn't think it was ever gonna be historic in and of itself. That was the Fifth County Courthouse that we had at the time. The first, first two were log cabins, the next three then burnt down. So I don't think anybody expected in eighteen ninety that we still have Old Red a hundred and thirty years later. We are also the custodian of critical local records. You don't really think of us as maybe doing that until you sit back and you go, well, just think of all the marriage licenses, birth certificates, death certificates, all the property records. Those are things that people use to compile family genealogies, to create, you know, property ownership chains, the very basis of how we record and remember history. We've also been a leader and facilitator in historic preservation. The Old Red Museum, the museum that's in this building, they didn't happen by magic overnight. They took many, many, many years to assemble and get to where they are today. And it was with the active participation of the Commissioners' Court, buying this building, investing the money to renovate it, working with the state. They had actually changed state law so that we could have a museum and be able to charge a ticket and recover the revenue so that we could provide the museum. Working with the public to raise the private funds for the Sixth War Museum, for the Old Red Museum. Again, that did not happen by accident. Then we're also the local arm of the state. We operate the court system, we file the records that the state requires, but that also allows us to do some other things. We talk about, here we go, Old Red, the clock tower, the Sixth War museums. This is Linda Lynn Adams. It's one of those, if you could ever clone someone or community service, that would be the model for it. She's the reason why we have the Sixth War Museum, she's the reason we have the Old Red Museum. And she now works for the foundation that serves Baylor Hospital. This is our top, our role as the local arm of the state. We are the first level of review for state historical markers. So all the ones that you say that say John Lee LeBryan slept here, we're responsible for reviewing those initially. What we started to do over the last decade or so is we've become more proactive in that role. We just don't sit there and wait for the community to submit the applications to us. We've begun to initiate them ourselves to commemorate certain aspects of the Kennedy's history that unbelievably some has been overlooked. This is a marker that does it, that represents or acknowledges the first juries in Dallas County to have women on them. Believe it or not, that did not happen until like nineteen fifty. We've also begun to provide funding to further help encourage the development of these markers that represent under-recognized aspects of our history. There's our, our County Chronicle, that's our electronic newsletter that we produce on a quarterly schedule now. We try to use that to be the calling card for a lot of our historic activities. One of the things that we have done in the last twenty years that's maybe been under the radar screen is that we've become very, very actively involved in historic preservation through economic development. Think back to the late eighties, early nineties, when we had suffered through the SNL collapse and the real estate bust. Downtown office vacancy levels in Dallas, I think the only city that had a higher vacancy rate was Detroit. The property values in downtown were about where they were in nineteen thirty. Very many of our iconic structures that at one time represented the economic foundation and backbone of our city, our community, were completely empty. The Mercantile Building over here, the Republic Bank Building. The Mercantile Building, if you think, if you remember that complex, took up a full city block and had a million point three square feet. That was now empty. As you imagine, that further depressed the local property values and what most people thought the only protective use of these properties were gonna be in the long term, were to be to demolish them and turn them into vacant lots or surface parking. Not only do we not preserve our past when we do that, we further drain our economic base. The county recognized that that was a situation that it could not endure and began providing targeted taxes for efforts to redevelop and repurpose those buildings. And all of these buildings that you see, they are examples of it. The end result of this is that we've done twenty of these targeted tax incentive projects. When they, we first started, those twenty properties had a value of thirty-five million dollars. They now have a value of almost five hundred million dollars, and they created about twenty-four hundred housing units. One other thing that we've done, it's just not just keeping care of the old buildings we have, the records that we maintain, but we've really tried to turn that into a teaching tool. We have done some things that I don't think some people appreciated initially. We have preserved remnants of segregationer signage. This was in the Records Building. It will continue to be in the Records Building when that renovation project is completed. It says white homing is over a water fountain. We had some interpretive signage put in to explain what that meant and why we were insisting on keeping it there. When we redid the plaza a number of years ago, we put in a fountain. But the fountain isn't just some random geometric design. It represents the three branches of the Trinity River. And then again, there's an interpretive piece that was installed by the plaza to help people understand why the Trinity River was and still is important to us today. And then our, certainly, the last thing I'll conclude with is our Records Building project. The Records Building is actually three buildings. First one was built about nineteen twelve, the next one was built about nineteen twenty, and then the last answer was built in the late nineteen fifties. As you might imagine, three buildings, three different periods, three distinct architectural styles, but they're more incompatible than that. The floors don't even match up, and they're, for those of you who've been in there, you will see certain sections where you have to suddenly drop down about four feet so you can get over the next floor. We are in the process now of completely redoing that building, both interior and exterior. Two hundred million dollars, that will make that the largest, what we call an adaptive reuse project of a historic building ever in the Dallas area. The Mercantile Project, which was probably the largest one prior to that, only cost about seventy or eighty million dollars. So when we're through with the Records Building in about three years, it will completely dwarf that in terms of economic scale. One of the things that we're doing, we're not only trying to make the building more efficient and more pleasing and more modern from a twenty-first century perspective, but we're gonna try to preserve some of the historic elements that are in there, and some of which are frankly hidden because of our efforts to try to adapt the building to modern daylight of the nineteen sixties through the eighties. We had to put in a bunch of false ceilings to cover up the need for air conditioning ducts and electrical wire and fire suppression units. As a result of that, it covered up the very ornate trim that you used to see in the ceilings. I also made the rooms seem a lot smaller than they really were because you had these false ceilings. We're gonna remove all that. Some of the brass hardware that you used to see on doors, that's gonna be put back in. Here's an example of how high some of these ceilings really are when you take out the false drop-down. This was brass railing that is close to where we used to have the gymnasium for the inmates. We had a very large jail in there at one time that closed about thirty years ago. That brass railing has been determined was at one time on the USS Texas. So again, that's one of those little interesting pieces that we're going to preserve and incorporate and then display and give appropriate acknowledgement to, so people don't understand. It's just not a bunch of pipe, that has a pipe of purpose. And I'll leave this with sort of my standard conclusion. People always say, well, I wanna apply for a marker. What are the general rules? And the thing that I always say is the rule of thumb is that the event or the subject or the activity or the building has to be at least fifty years old. But as some of us will testify, just because you're fifty years old doesn't mean you're historic. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. You can tell him, Chris, we're now, who contributes mightily to the Dallas County substance and historical perspectives. I will value what he has to say. You know what, we're not done yet either.
No, of course not.
Right now, we're working on Old Red and seeing how we can make it more meaningful. Well, we're talking about that that might be the repository for Dallas County history. Which kinda makes sense, I think. Either that or me my office. Lastly, we're gonna talk about or listen to and interact with the Dallas County Public Works, and we have Tushar Solanki with us. Just see, just a totally different perspective of the public work activity that goes on in Dallas County. So thank you very much for coming this morning.
Thank you again, Commissioner. So at Dallas County Public Works, we have two primary programs. One is the Road and Bridge, the other one is the Major Capital Improvement Program, MCTIP. Road and Bridge Program, traditionally, what we have done so far is that regular maintenance of existing facilities. When the cities, they turn in their request to maintain certain aspect of the roadway, we, our Road and Bridge District Crew, they would do the typical repair within short period of time, but at the same time, we would request the city to pay for the material and Road and Bridge would do the labor or provide labor services on those projects. But as Commissioner mentioned in the beginning, that in the District One, we have very limited unincorporated area. So because of that, we have come up with the organized R and B Agreement Program where we would like for the cities Garland, Muskeve, Dallas, and Richardson, we would want them to participate fifty percent in the overall funding to leverage the county dollars to improve lot more improvements and working together. When we have the states from the cities working with us, especially in the funding also, we work together, we find a solution and the project really expedite in that situation. Because of that, we have overall funding participation by twenty seventeen is five point four million, which leverages almost seventeen million from the different cities, including the Garland, Richardson, Muskeve, and Dallas. Major Capital Improvement Program. This is one of the unique program that county has adopted around nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, where it's also considered K-S-U-GO program. So cities, they would participate more than fifty percent while county do, will participate in fifty percent in funding partnership for any project that is turned in for the county Public Works review before recommending the projects for Commissioners' Court approval. Typically, we have twenty-five to thirty years lifespan when we select this project, that's for the project is being designed to last for twenty-five to thirty years. And the project delivery time is about four to five years because it takes time to design, especially starting with the planning, then the design, then we have to acquire the right-of-way, then utility locations, and then construction. But at the same time, doing all these items, we cannot do without community support, and that's the most important thing that we start with. And we work closely with the Commissioners' Office, setting up these planning meetings and inviting all the friends group, the neighborhood groups, the public improvement districts, tax increment finance districts. We work closely with the cities. So it's a complex process, so we do step by step, and MCTIP is a great program that... that, that allows us to go through a complete process in order to have a successful project And, and the last thing on this slide is that the county so far, as I said, since 1999, 570 million leveraged, almost over 1.8 billion, and that's the projection through 2020. So we talked about the two program earlier. These two programs is the trail programs that we have. One of them is the Major Capital Improvement Program for the trail. So those trails are multimodal trails, working with the multi-agencies and making sure that the trail is not just a recreational purpose, but we have destinations such as work, the Dart stations, the schools, the church. We want to go somewhere and the ultimate goal is to make sure that the, from the county, from south to north, east to west, we have complete trail network, working with the different cities within the county along with the CAG, North Central Council of Government and Tech Start to make sure that we have continuous and consistent network for the trail project. And the other program that we have and that is monitored by Mr. Lesburg is the Trail and Reserve Program that we, we work with Mr. Lesburg and, and one of the projects that, famous project is the KD Trail, that it was built in phases. First, the trail went in there, then all the economic growth happened and at the same time, we had the jogging trail that was provided later. And the KD Friends Group, they, they were really working closely with the stakeholders to provide all the safety lightings and everything, so it's a good program. District One, including cities Dallas, Muskeith, Richardson and Garland, we have many projects that are active right now and also working on many designs, like I said, the planning and the study that we are working on. Some of the projects that we have selected in the recent call that is not funded 100%. What I'm trying to say is that the county already has the funding committed. We are waiting on the city's bond program. This is, this slide is about the county trail system. As I was saying earlier, that we are trying to make sure that when we talk about a trail project, we want to have destination. And ultimate goal is to, we want to, we don't, hopefully we won't need a car one day to get to work or get to the destinations that we are trying to reach. And importance of the trails, we all know that is, is the healthy, creates a healthy environment, it's a recreational facility, and it brings the communities together. And importance of, of trails, I'm sure Mr. Lesburg can talk a lot more, a lot better than me, but we have, we have seen some studies, some, we have heard some talks that because of the trails, it encourages the development of the economic activity along the trail and also it has been increasing the value of the properties along the trails. And, and the real example is that, and I'll talk about couple trail projects later, is that the Sopek Trail is under construction right now. The developer have been calling us that when this trail will be completed, because the reason that they are calling us to find out, they want to advertise their property's selling point is that it's next to the Sopek Trail project. So that's, that's what they feel proud about, that, that's the trend that we have seen lately. And as I say earlier, that planning and partnering, that's the key to this multi-jurisdictional project. Nowadays, you know, if I'm given a mile of trail and if I'm told that build this project, we can, we can design that, that trail project within couple of months and start building it, but that's not, that's not what, what the project is about. The first thing we have to take it to the community. We need to have a win-win situation. We are doing this project for the community because sometimes what the engineer thinks and engineers has a vision and mission, that may not be the same mission and vision for the community. And we are trying to collaborate and have the win-win situation, working with the neighborhood groups and that's what this is about, that, and at the same time, when you involve the community, they are there to, to maintain that, that trail. They, they see that, that, you know, once this trail is built, you know, they'll be the one using it every day and they feel passionate about it. They set up their own groups, they pick up the trash if it needs to and keep it clean because it's a, it's a great amenity to the community. So these are some trail pictures, photos that we have, that's the Mockingbird Trail, White Rock Creek Trail. This is a beautiful trail that Mr. Lesburg's division builds, South Muskeith Trail. Again, this is a slide that talks about the call for projects. And the call for projects is that every, I would say, two to three years, all the cities they submit their priority requests for the county's review before approval. And we go through a thoroughly review and make sure that that project, it fits into the overall network that for the, for the trail or for the street in compliance with the Council of Governments and, and we recommend for Commissioner's Court approval. So those are the projects that have been listed here, starting from the Call One around 1999 to recent program in 2014, recent call. This is a Sopek Gas and Airline Connection. We built this project in 2014. This is right by, not too far from the Arboretum. It's off of East Grand and Garland Avenue. It's just about a thousand linear foot of trail, but what it does is that it provides that the new development right in that corner and connection to the Senape Trail, which eventually connects to the White Rock Creek Trail. We worked very closely with the developer during the construction. That Creek Trail Connector, this was one of the earlier projects we completed in 2006 and as part of this project, the Transit Transfer Station was built by the Dart and the connection of the roadway to the I-30, including having the proposed trail that ties further north into the overall city's trail system and it will, it also connects further north to Richardson Trail System. Lake Island's TOD, earlier Councilmember Magoo, he explained a little bit about this project. Yes, this project was built around 2010, 2011, but now things are really happening. We have seen many stores, they have already opened, including Sprout, and many of the other stores are soon opening. But this project was built in partnership with, with CAG, Dart, City of Dallas and the developer Prescott Wielke. Dart opened the station at the Walnut Hill Lane for the Blue Line at the same time when we were done with this project. And this was coming soon. We have Sopek Trail. This is a trail alignment that we have, right now we are working on all the way from Lakewood Drive that is close to the Lotter Drive next to the lake to go north, just north of Royal Link to tie to the White Rock Creek Trail, which is about five mile north-south vital connector that we are working on currently. And I am happy to record because last year when we recorded at the Town Hall Meeting, we were talking about that we are under design. I'm glad to report that Phase 4A, which is from Northwest Highway to north of Greenville, about two and a half mile, is under construction right now, about 20% complete. And Phase 3 will open this next week. So both of these projects by, by spring 2019, that's the completion that, that we are expecting. Actually, 4A will hopefully be completed by summer next year. So all these communities, they've been really waiting for, for this trail to open, especially with Fremont and Pitt District that, that we are working closely with that. And 4B, north of Greenville, that the city is responsible for that one mile and waiting on the bond money. Hopefully what Councilmember talked about the bond program, 800 million, hopefully this is a candidate. And eventually that trail, we will tie into the, another North Haven or another most important trail, North Haven Trail going east-west and that North Haven Trail actually ties into all the way to Denton Drive and along Walnut Hill Lane goes on the other side of 35 to tie into the L-4 Athletic Complex, I think which is called now Monogram Soccer Complex. So we have extensive trail system. This is a 35 project, expansion project that Tech Start is working on. It's about almost 11 miles. The first segment is from 75 to Royal Lane and the second segment from Royal to I-30. We are expecting project letting around 2020. While the Tech Start was working on the LBJ Expansion, we worked closely with Tech Start, the City of Garland, City of Muskeith, City of Dallas, City of Richardson, to talk about any potential connections beyond the Tech Start right-of-way to tie into either the street or the trail network and any access points that, and that we need to take care of, including the safety lighting, especially under the, the bridges. So, and then we got good response working with, with Tech Start. This is another project, what Councilmember talked about earlier, Spillman Adelia Interchange. And this will pretty much kick off at the same time at the LBJ Expansion project. This, the cost is 60 plus million, many agencies are involved, CAG, Tech Start, the city, of course county is involved. And Spring Valley Road, I can't talk enough about this, this project. It's a great project, about a mile long, working closely with the City of Richardson. Multimodal project, ties into the Cottonwood Trail also and, and provides a great connection. An estimated completion 2018. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think part of what I got out of what Char is talking about is connectivity and that's just really connectivity in our roads, connectivity in the trails and seeing how we can make it so that all of Dallas County is connected. And I think also what he's saying is that through those kinds of roads and trails connections that we're connecting our people, which was how we started out this little talk. So thank you very much for all you do and I thoroughly enjoy working with you because these are, these are what I call the, kind of the fun things. We talk about that, we didn't, we didn't get any easy problems to address when you talk about mental health in jails, when you talk about healthcare in today's world, those are, those are not the easy ones, but these at least are fun ones. And all's we have to figure out is how we can make the roads match up with each other and to get the, the funding to them. At this time, I'd like to say thank you very much, first of all, for enduring up to this point, but I sincerely hope that what you have gotten out of this is that Dallas County is involved in a lot of different kinds of things that impact absolutely every person in the county, whether you own property, whether you vote, whether you walk or drive your car, you're going to be impacted by what we do. The million dollar budget that we have, I think, billion dollar budget, I'm sorry, is, is a positive force within not only Dallas County, but the area. And I can with great pride talk about what's going on here with a lot of people, both around the state and across the, across the United States, because we are right there in the middle of it all. At this time, I would like to go through our little raffle and if anybody has their, has their, their tickets and maybe if you will, Claudia, grab a ticket.
You go.
And let us see what we have. 672-173, 173, okay, you have got A, B, or C. See? You have a really, I think it's a really cool book talking about Dallas County that you can take with you and say, um, let us see where this goes. Okay, let's try another one. Shake them on real good, what do we have? 672-172.
Oh, no.
Very good, okay. A or B? I'm sorry?
My last chance would be, so I'll pick B.
You'll pick B? Have you been to the Six Core Museum?
Yes.
Oh, well, good. Well, thank you very much because I know that they will enjoy seeing you.
Thanks.
It is, I think they have done quite a nice job of improving, changing, creating new opportunities there. Okay. 672-181.
All right.
Yeah, but.
I'll choose A.
Hey, well then, I'll, I'll actually, I'll give you the choice.
Who?
You can have U.S. Constitution or you too can have tickets to the museum.
I'm on the museum, I've got my Constitution.
I'll bet you do have your Constitution. I sincerely hope that you take away from this that first of all, Dallas County is doing a lot of stuff and that as you're representative in District One, that we are in the thick of things, looking at how we can improve things in, in this, in our part of the capital. If there are questions, because once again, we cannot do this by ourselves. Thank you very much to the staff members who have taken time out of their day to be here because it is very appreciated, first of all, what you do every day, but, but to be a part of the sharing with the community. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Dr. Bang. Your Town Hall meeting was always casual enough, friendly and informative, so thank you. But I have a question of Rick.
Okay.
You mentioned the Mercantile Building and the Republic Tower and the renovation of those. That renovations were county-funded, right?
In, well, there, we provided tax incentives.
To?
To the developers of both of those. Now, Mercantile also got funding from the city's downtown Tax Increment Finance District, which we are a participant in.
Okay. Reason I'm asking that, the county doesn't own those buildings, right?
No, not at all.
And I wondered why we were renovating them if we don't own them, but you answered the question. Thank you.
Would like to say that, yes, sir?
Oh, two answers. One is they had a November community college, early voting occasion. I was surprised at how many people voted there. I think that's terrific.
That's right.
I think those are probably new, younger voters. I hope those can be. I hope those can be continued.
I would, that, that's one of my desires, and so I know that we'll be working with the county elections department, and with, obviously, the commissioners court and the bribe of other people to make that happen.
So much related, given the Russian intervention story of that election, and the fact that we have aging election equipment, I hope we'll have the voter-verified election equipment and random audit as we move to the next generation of equipment.
That's something that we're always very, very acutely aware of, talking about cybersecurity, Dallas County, when the first big attacks came in, took a very proactive position, hired a consultant whose job was very specifically that, so that we could protect what we do have, and take steps within to make sure that we're also protecting from inside out. As far as the elections equipment, that's something that we've been looking at now for about a year, and will continue to look at and have kept on top of the protection of the integrity of the, of the information and of the system itself. Sad to say, it won't be before the next 2018 election that we get new equipment, but it will be shortly thereafter, because we are now looking at those companies that are available to do that. And I don't know whether Tony wanted to say anything else. Well, I feel good about where we are as far as protecting what we're doing.
And you said it correctly. We just met, I believe it was last Monday, in Austin with other counties, so we're trying to develop a group purchase, so we all have some of the same things in common, and we have, try to get the most best equipment, that is certified for our money, for our taxpayers' money. So like you said, it's not going to be in 2018, but it takes a while, and we want to make sure that we get the most current technology in these voting systems, rather than trying to get something that's newer than ours, but yet going to be outdated, you know, in about three to five years. So we want to make sure that this is the premier election technology that's going to keep us going for a while.
And I'd be happy to keep you up on what's going, because I know that you've spent some time in the past doing that, looking at election equipment. Thank you very, very much. Oh, yes, sir?
I have one question about the project, this is elections to, for, as going to the medical facility to get it done, I know it sounds like it was time-consuming, as well as, but is that already being done, or the one way you go to the medical facility, is there, it's five, four minutes?
I am not sure what the status of that is.
It's on the governor's desk, to be considered, it's passed, so it's on the governor's desk. Their intention was to prevent the voter fraud in the mail process at the residential facilities. So they're saying, instead of the public, or somebody that's employed at the nursing home, requesting these mail ballots, half of these people, that should be someone that's certified, like election workers, to go there and assist, but it is going to be very time-consuming. We don't know how many residential facilities that we have in Dallas County, and with such a small amount of people that qualify to make us have to go there to those facilities. And they're thinking that, that when you have certified election workers going to the residential facilities, then you don't have someone persuaded or defrauded those individuals that are there, that can't really fend for themselves.
Thank you very much. Obviously, we can't go without all of, all of you either, and none of us can be where we, you know, we can't be everywhere all the time, so it's equally dependent on residents of Dallas County to help us. If anybody needs a parking voucher, let Claudia know, and she'll help you on that. If not, thank you so, so much for coming out, for showing your dedication. If there's ever anything that we can do, just ask. Hopefully, the open door policy will, will continue, and we'll be able to respond to what you have. If we can get a little, oh my gosh, we can miss, we have dunks.
Oh, yeah. You know, it's a documented story.
Very good. We want to get a quick picture with all of our, not only our rock star, Mr. Tom, and Tony, and Raul, and... Oh, you got your queen.
Come on, Charlie, come on. No, I still love the sound.
Oh, you got your queen.
Well, you know, actually, it's probably saving the most.
You get a stick out, no, it's just like a sugar on the lid.
Yeah.
Anytime.
Come on, we do, we do, we do.
Come on, come on.
People are seeing places to go.
They want to step right.
It's a meeting, it's a meeting.
People move around the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, staff.
No, I got one more. You got, you doing what you want?
Yeah.
Yeah, do it, because you got to do it.
It's all of us working together.
All of us working together.
That's right.
This is William, hopefully your favorite videographer from Two Hacks Publishing. I hope you enjoyed this video. If you like it, please leave comments below, or like, follow, or subscribe to us and get notices of all our videos. We love it, even when you call.